Good evening and welcome to the November 17, 2025 special session of the Mayor and City Council. So in order to conduct this special session, we need a motion, and I'm going to hand it over to Lisa to make this motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Mayor and City Council of the city of Gaithersburg conduct a special session on Monday, November 17, 2025 solely to receive the certification of election results and to swear in the newly elected mayor and two city council members.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, that carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Now we're going to go to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to invite our junior mayor, Numan Ketalaya, to the podium to come lead us in the pledge. Everyone could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Numan. Next, we are going to have the Board of Supervisors of Elections present the certified election results, and I'm going to invite from the board, Ty Hardaway, to please do the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Ashman, members of the City Council, and the Gaithersburg community, I am Ty Hardaway. I am the Chair of the Board of Supervisors of Elections. I had the pleasure of serving as the Chief Judge for the 2025 Gaithersburg City Elections. The Board of Supervisors of Elections held a general election on Tuesday, November 4, 2025, for mayor and two city council members, serving four-year terms. There were six candidates, two for mayor and four for city council. For this election, the city employed a hybrid election process to include mail-in and in-person voting, including early in-person voting. Paper ballots were counted using optical scanning equipment, and the board was pleased with how well everything worked. At the closing of the polls, the scanners were locked and sealed, preventing the units from accepting any further ballots. The election results report were automatically printed, and results were saved to memory cards. The board counted and certified the mail-in ballots as well as those cast in person. Ballots postmarked by Election Day and received within two business days after the election, as well as provisional ballots that were completed during in-person voting, were counted. And the official election results were different from the unofficial results announced Tuesday, November 4, 2025. However, all outcomes remained the same. A grand total of 6,273 valid ballots were cast. The Board of Supervisors of Elections has certified Judd Ashman as mayor, and Lisa Henderson and Jim McNulty as city council members, each serving four-year terms. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors of Elections, we would like to thank city staff, our election judges, and our election judges for conducting a very thorough, fair, and efficient election. We would also like to thank our cordial and collegial candidates, many of whom are here today, and all of our city voters. I am very proud of Gaithersburg. Thank you.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is the Oath of Office, and first is mine, and to administer is the Circuit Court Clerk Karen Bushel. And then I will present the oath, or I will lead the oath for Lisa and for Jim. Administer the oath. That's the firmest. Oh, you haven't memorized it?
I, Judd Ashman.
I, Judd Ashman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Mayor of Gaithersburg.
Mayor of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations. And I need you to sign right here?
Yeah, and I need you to sign right here, too.
Thank you.
All right.
Is there just one?
Yeah. Thank you, Karen.
My pleasure.
Okay, so next, we're going to do Lisa, and Lisa, please feel free to invite anybody you want up here with you as well.
I would ask that my family come up. I see members of them out there. Now they're going to act shy.
We know the truth. Come on. Now you stay right where you are. I want you guys in the shot, so right here next to you. Okay, please raise your right hand. Aye, and then state your name.
Aye, Lisa Henderson.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
City Council of the city of Gaithersburg.
City Council of the city of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
I could promise you that we did not invent that pledge, that oath. That is actually state law. It's the clonkiest oath ever known to man. Okay, all right, one more round of applause. Okay, Jim, please invite whoever you would like. Let's make sure everybody's in the shot. Perfect. Okay, please raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, James Francis McNulty.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
City Council of the city of Gaithersburg.
City Council of the city of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
Congratulations. Sidney always used to joke that we have them sign immediately before they change their names. All right, it is now official. One more round of applause for Jim. Okay, so I am going to give everyone here a chance to say a few words, and we're going to start with newly re-elected Councilmember Lisa Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I stand before you, or sit before you, actually, filled with gratitude, humility, and renewed sense of purpose. I am honored to have once again earned your trust and to continue serving you as your Gaithersburg City Councilmember. First, I want to thank my family. Your love, patience, and constant encouragement carried me through every long night, every forum, every door knocked, and every challenge along the way. I could not do this without your unwavering support. Tonight, I also am thinking about my father. He used to tell us all, "Go out and learn something today." Those words shaped who I am as a daughter, as a public servant, and as someone who believes deeply in listening, growing, and learning from people I serve. His spirit and that lesson stay with me every single day. And I want to recognize my mother, Reverend Teresa Henderson. She prayed for us throughout this entire campaign and continues to pray for this mayor and council daily. Her faith, her strength, and her guidance have been a blessing to me and to this community. To my friends and volunteers, thank you. You showed up in the heat, in the rain, after work, on weekends, and whenever our community needed to hear your message. You shared your time, your energy, and your hearts. This victory belongs to you as much as it belongs to me. And to the elected officials, your support has meant the world, whether you offered your guidance, attended events, shared encouragement, or simply checked in. You reminded me that public service is built on relationships and community. I also want to congratulate the mayor, Judd Ashman, and councilmember Jim McNulty. We were friends long before we started this campaign together. But by knocking on doors together, meeting neighbors, listening on front porches, sharing our stories, brought us even closer. I am grateful for those partnerships, for their partnership, their leadership, and the teamwork that made this campaign so meaningful. I look forward to continuing and to collaborate with you as we serve Gaithersburg side by side. I also want to acknowledge everyone who stepped forward to participate in this election. Offering your time, ideas, and perspective takes commitment, and our community grows stronger when people engage in the democratic process. And I also want to recognize my fellow councilmembers, Neil Harris, Rob Wu, and Jamil Hernandez. With all of us returning, the band is back together. And I'm excited to continue the great work we have been doing as one team for Gaithersburg. And to the residents of Gaithersburg, thank you for believing in the vision of an inclusive, forward-thinking city, a city where every neighborhood matters, every voice is heard, every generation is valued. Your support is not just a vote, it is a commitment to continuing the progress we have made together. This campaign was rooted in one simple idea: encouraged by community. And tonight, you prove once again how powerful that idea truly is. As we head into this next term, I remain focused on the issues that matter: housing affordability, smart development, support for seniors and families, economic growth, public safety, and ensuring Gaithersburg remains a welcoming place to live. We have important work ahead of us, but we will do it together, listening, learning, and lifting one another up. Thank you for your trust, thank you for your partnership, and thank you for the privilege of serving this incredible city. I am honored, I am inspired, and I am ready for what comes next. Thank you, and let's keep moving forward, Gaithersburg. Let's do it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll go to Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to give my congratulations to you and to our good friend, Councilmember Lisa Henderson, as well. I want to start by thanking both of you for your friendship and your support these last four years and these last four months. It was an honor to run with you, and I'm so glad that we actually got our moment this time. You know, four years ago, it was the middle of the night when we found out that we had won, so we didn't get to celebrate. So being able to celebrate with the two of you was really special, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to run it back with the two of you. I also want to thank my council colleagues, who could have simply watched from the sidelines, but were active in helping get us reelected. So to councilmembers Neil Harris and Rob Wu and our Vice President, Jamil Hernandez, I look forward to continuing to share the deus with you and to doing the good work together for our residents. I want to congratulate the Board of Supervisors of Elections, our city staff, especially our city manager, Tanisha Brierley, and our city clerk, Leah Jones, and all the staff who worked on the election on managing such a robust turnout. It's still not where we'd like it to be, but we are trending in the right direction, and this gives us momentum to build on in the next two years. Before I get into thanking my team, I want to acknowledge Tiffany Kelly and Chris Toms and Oma Williams for putting themselves out there and wanting to make a difference for our community. And Chris and Tiffany are here tonight, and I have sat in that seat and watched someone else get sworn in, and it is not easy. We are a character count city, and being here tonight and supporting us shows that you truly embody that, so thank you for being here tonight. There are so many people that I need to thank, starting with my family. This has been a really challenging year on many, many levels, and I could not have survived it without them: my wife, Amy, my children, CJ and Sean. CJ just got home from college today, so four hours home, and she gets to come to dad's getting sworn in. Both of my children got to vote in this election, and my son got to cast his first-ever vote for his dad. That's really cool. I'm just so blessed. I love you guys so much. My parents, Kathy, Frank, Bonnie, were all here on Election Day, along with my brother, Chris. Actually, this weekend, we just celebrated my dad's 75th birthday up in Philly, so I know they're watching, so happy birthday again, Dad. It was a really special moment on Election Day. We got to get a great picture with my parents and Lisa's mom having all the parents there together. It was a really great moment. My in-laws, Sharon and Kathy, as well as Uncle Tommy, who was incredibly generous. And then, of course, my team. You know, eight years ago, I learned that it's not enough that you want to run for office. You have to have a village that wants you in that office, too. And along the way, I have been blessed to meet so many kind and generous people who have given their time, their talent, and their treasure to help get me elected. In particular, I want to thank Andy, and Isaac, and Matt, and Jason, and Oscar, and Ari and Demetria, and Pete, and Lee, and George, and Yvette, and David, and June Trone, and Ken and Rebecca, and Rich, and Sean, and Tony, and too many people to name everybody, but we had over 90 different donations from people, and I'm humbled by your generosity. To the dozens of my colleagues at various levels of government who gave their endorsements, from our friends in Rockville, to our state delegations from D-17 and 39, to our county council colleagues and elsewhere, I appreciate each and every one of you. I appreciate our partnership, and I look forward to working together towards our common goals. And of course, I must thank the voters of Gaithersburg. From the bottom of my heart, thank you so very much for sending me back to work with these excellent public servants. I cannot tell you how much it means to me to have so many of you come up on Election Day and whisper in my ear, "I just voted for you," or to be told when I was door-knocking, "I already sent my ballot in for you." This is one of the best things about municipal government, these one-on-one interactions that happen with the community throughout the year. And that's the benefit of being the level of government that's closest to the people. Throughout our campaign, I would hear over and over all the great things that the city is doing with very specific praise for members of city staff that they've connected with in their daily lives. I can't tell you how often I heard, "The city's great. Everyone else is a mess." But that is a testament to our incredible city staff who make us look good on a daily basis. And while we're not immune to the mess that is happening all around us, it really is refreshing to receive that kind of feedback. You know, we all are in this to try to make our little corner of the world a better place. But of course, there is much work that still needs to be done. We heard loud and clear that affordability, and pedestrian safety, and growth are top of mind in our community, as they should be. And that work begins straight away. And while we may not always agree on the how, I'm confident that by working together, leveraging our talents and our passions, and by truly listening to the needs of our community, Gaithersburg will continue to be the best city in the world, and I for one am ready to get back to work. So thank you, God bless you, and to steal the mayor's line, let's do great things, Gaithersburg.
You're going to hear that line more than once tonight. Spoiler. Jamil, sure?
Not much could be added there. I was reflecting on something Councilmember McNulty said during the campaign on Election Night about the Gaithersburg Way. And the Gaithersburg Way is something very special to me, and it's, you know, how we treat each other with civility and collegiality. And we try to give voters reasons to vote for us, not against our opponents. And you saw that happen in this election. I'm really proud of that, and I look forward to continuing to work with everybody. I'm getting goosebumps. And wishing you great things, and want to also do great things with Gaithersburg together.
Right. Let's go to Neil.
Okay, so I'm just very proud, not only of my colleagues for running great campaigns, but for the entire election process, where it was very civil, it wasn't personal, it was focused on the issues and the needs. And there was debate, there was disagreement, but it was all handled in the Gaithersburg Way, where we had civil discussions and let the voters decide. I'm very proud of the fact that we had the biggest turnout we've ever had in an election. As was said, we would like it to be even higher, but we beat the previous total by more than 1,000 votes, I think probably 1,500, which is good, and hopefully we'll do even better next time. But I'm very happy to be serving with these fine people once again, and we're going to do great things for you. And let us know what you need, and we'll keep trying to help. Thank you.
Rob?
I would just say ditto, but I guess I have a little bit more to say because of the momentous night, and so... Mayor Judd, Jim, Lisa, congratulations. It's as it should be, and I look forward to working with you for at least a little time more. I will acknowledge the record turnout and the fact that up until this certification, I was the most popular council member by votes. But now both Lisa and Jim have surpassed me, and so congratulations on that. Of course, to the Board of Supervisors of Elections and staff, it was flawless this time, which is, it's very good every other time, but this time, it just seemed flawless, and it's just a testament to the amount of hard work that Boz and staff put into this. And I understand we have a new person at the helm of the ship as far as this election is concerned, and so congratulations to Leah on running this.
Of course, it goes without saying, you know, we want to have a robust election, and we've been thinking of ways every year, and we're going to call upon Boz again, to think about how we can make our democracy more perfect. But, you know, I think that it starts with great candidates, so I do want to acknowledge and congratulate Tiffany, Oma, and Chris for just making it so energetic and making our democracy work, and we hope it works in the future. So just congratulations. I did want to note that when I, in 2023, when I was sworn in, my wife and kids did not attend. They were on vacation somewhere, but this time, they're actually here to congratulate the three of you, so yes.
Thank you, Rob. Let's give Rob a round of applause. So I do want to, before I launch into some remarks, I do want to acknowledge some people in the audience. Tiffany Kelly, let's give Tiffany a round of applause. Chris Toms, let's give Chris a round of applause. And almost not here, but I think he deserves a round of applause, too. I also want to acknowledge some elected officials in the audience tonight. I'm going to start with our former mayor and current county councilmember, Sidney A. Katz. We had Senator Nancy King, but she had to run because they're doing a joint priorities hearing. I don't know how Ryan's still here, but we'll get to Ryan in a second. But we also have our delegate from District 17, former city councilmember Ryan Spiegel. And we have two former city council members in the room, Mike Sesma. And way in the back, Yvette Monroe. So people often ask me, "What's it like being mayor? Do you enjoy it?" And right now, the refrain that keeps popping into my head is that famous line from the Elizabeth Barrett Browning poem, "How do I love thee? Let me count the ways." I'm not going to try to count all the ways that I love being mayor, because it would take hours, but I want to share just one example. A few weeks ago, Jessa, one of our nonprofit partners, invited me to the Parent Resource Center over at Gaithersburg Elementary School. And I walked into a classroom where there were a couple dozen people, all Hispanic. They were learning English as their kids went to school at the school, they went to school at Gaithersburg Elementary. They seemed friendly, but you could feel a little bit of wariness, a little guardedness. So I introduced myself. I said, "Hi, I'm Judd Ashman, mayor of Gaithersburg." And before I tell you about how the city works, as I was prompted to do, I want to say on behalf of our city council and our staff that we welcome you, and we're glad that you're here, and we're proud of this program, and we're proud of you, and we want you to be part of our community. And as the staff translated my words, I watched their faces, and you could actually see the tension ease. The shoulders dropped, the eyes softened, because frankly, this isn't the message that many immigrants have been hearing from people in government, from people who look like me in recent months. What they heard in that moment was the opposite. And from there, it turned into a very delightful conversation. We ended up taking pictures and sharing stories, and a young man there actually asked me for several autographs, which is completely absurd, but very flattering. And I left feeling like we'd made a real connection. And as I was leaving, it struck me how lucky that I am at such a fraught time in our national politics that this community would give me the opportunity to extend a hand and offer a warm embrace on its behalf. If, after all these years, you still get a tinge of imposter syndrome, I feel like that's how you know you're still in it for the right reasons. What a blessing. And as a postscript, so I had invited all of these people to come be part of our meetings, and we can get an interpreter for you if you want. And they had actually, on Friday, I got a request for an interpreter for this meeting. Now, so we have, we're ready in the back room to interpret. However, I think when they found out that it was just to swear us in, and we weren't actually conducting real business, they're like, "I don't want to see you." We'll come to the next meeting. We'll come to the next meeting." I don't know. But hopefully, we'll get a chance to all say hello to them and give them the warm welcome. This was my seventh city election campaign, and to put that in perspective and sound really old, the first year I won a seat on the council, Apple had just launched the first iPhone. George W. Bush was the president. My hair had color in it. And since then, I've been through the Great Recession here, multiple government shutdowns and the pandemic. But through it all, Gaithersburg has been constant. The greatest of places to be. What makes it so great? Well, Shakespeare said it best, "What is the city but the people?" From the first day here to this day, I have found the people of Gaithersburg to be absolutely wonderful. That's not to say that we live in some sort of impenetrable bubble. Campaigns give you a view of a city that's both telescopic and microscopic. People are generally good and often awesome. I have made some terrific new friends this year. But I think Lisa and Jim would agree that the coarseness and toxicity of national politics has unfortunately seeped into our city in some ways. And I would just remind everyone, it's never healthy when we talk past each other, make assumptions based on labels or appearances, or forget to actually listen. Because every time I knock on doors, I'm reminded, "The world is more nuanced than that. People are more nuanced than that. The stories that have brought our neighbors to this place together with us are incredible. They're worth hearing, and we need to put down our phones sometimes and get out of our silos and make space to hear them." How, how do I love our staff? Let me count the ways. On the trail this year, a lot of folks told me, "You're doing a great job. Gaithersburg is so well-run." And that's very gratifying to hear, but I know it's not what they really mean. Because it's not like most people are watching our meetings and astonished by how well I run them. It's really not. I can acknowledge that, or that they're fully aware of the decisions that the council and I are making all the time, maybe a few of them. But what they're really talking about is this. When they call for a new recycle bin, our public work staff get it to them the next day, maybe even that day. When they take a cooking class at Casey, they walk away with techniques that they'll use for life. When they submit a permit for a new deck, our planning and code team helps them get through it quickly and respectfully. What they're feeling is the excellence of our staff. If I can take credit for anything, it's this. Over the 18 years I've been in office here, I've learned, and at times I have preached, that the well-being and morale of our staff is something we must always protect. Because when our staff feel supported, they serve with professionalism and a smile, and that's what makes this community shine. This was a hard-fought election. Everyone got out there to meet the voters and make their cases, and I salute all of the candidates, Tiffany Kelly, Oma Demola Williams, and Chris Toms. They put themselves out there, worked hard, and gave the voters a real choice. They made us all better candidates, and that was good for Gaithersburg and for democracy. I'm thrilled for both Lisa and Jim, both very good friends, terrific public servants. Huge congratulations to both of them and their teams and their families. And how do I love our team? Let me count the ways. I have argued through this campaign and will continue to that we have the most efficient, responsive local government in Maryland. The people at this dais offer a diversity of professional skills, life experience, and leadership approaches. But one thing that all of us have in common is that we're all invested in a proud culture of civility, working to do good by Gaithersburg. To the voters, supporters, volunteers, friends, and anyone who offered encouragement along the way, I thank you profoundly. And my final thank you is to my family, including my wife, Lee, my kids, Jeff, Brittany, and Jenna, our grandchildren, Willow and Wesley, and all of the relevant dogs and cats in our lives. The only job I have that's better than being Mayor Judd is being Papa Judd. And the fact that you all let me do both is something I'll always be grateful for. Also for the day-to-day support and the wise advice and for helping this color-challenged guy match his outfits. But now, as my colleagues have said, it's time to move forward. The people have spoken, they've passed us the baton once again and asked us to lead this city toward its potential. I believe as strongly as ever that Gaithersburg can be the very best of America, and as we pursue that vision, may we remember that our greatest successes are collective, not individual. May we protect the traditions of civility and good governance that have defined us. May we treasure the morale and well-being of our staff, and may we always keep in mind who we serve and why we serve, for that's our reason for being. Let's do great things, Gaithersburg. And with that, I will invite every, we're going to adjourn this meeting in a second, but I will invite everybody. We have some food set up in the community room next door, and we hope you'll all join us and enjoy that. We have a work session next Monday night, November 24th, to discuss the status report for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Safety Action Plan. We hope you'll join us then, and then the next regular meeting of the mayor and council will be on Monday, December 1st. Until next time, again, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.